Should not have touched.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment for Monday, May 11, 2015. The first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is the review and approval of the minutes of the May 4, 2015 meeting.
Do I make a motion to accept them as transmitted?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The first item on our regular business agenda is an application of New Market Mills, LLC, Harry Wesson. This is a continuation of a public hearing for an application for variances from Section 4.05b 2 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance for a roof-mounted sign, and Section 4.05b 3 to allow two signs for both Butcher's Choice and Newberry Farms at 66 Main Street, Tax Map U2, Lot 57, M2A. And Diane, I understand you're going to excuse yourself.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask the applicants representative to step forward. Before you begin, Mr. McDonald, you may notice that we have four members here tonight. Usually, we have five, and we have an alternative signed up. I don't know where they are. You need three votes, three affirmative votes for a variance. Statistically, your chances are better with five of us than with four of us. So it's up to you to decide whether you want to go forward or whether we want to figure out where one of our other members is. I'll leave that entirely up to you.
If I could just take a minute and...
Absolutely. Take your time.
Did we make Richie a...
We'll do that.
When would the next meeting be? Do you have any idea?
My guess is that we're going to meet probably next Monday if we can, because I'm anticipating that the other application that's here, we're going to continue it for a week. And I apologize, I didn't have noticed in advance that these gentlemen were not going to be here tonight. So I'm anticipating that we'll be meeting next week, probably next Monday.
Okay. Then we're going to proceed.
Very good. And the way we do it is you present your application, your evidence. Please do not read the document to us.
I will not.
And then we will ask questions, and then we'll close, find out if there's public comment, close it, and then we'll have some discussion among ourselves and go from there. And we may ask you to step back up if questions develop later.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Well, good evening. My name's Doug McDonald. I'm with the law firm McKenna-McDonald, and I'm here on the New Market Mills, Harry Wesson, application for 66 Market Street and the M2A zone. The purpose for the variance request is relative to a roof sign located at that location. And the roof sign is necessary basically because it's the only viable option to identify the business in a way that would serve both the business and the traveling public. So what I'd like to do, I did hand in a narrative earlier tonight. It was emailed, I think, earlier today. I'm not sure if all of you had a chance to go through it thoroughly, but I will highlight the points made in the variance narrative, and if you have questions, we can talk about them after. For the criteria, I relied mostly on the case law of Harborside Associates. That has seemingly some nice cross references with this particular case. On the first point, the first criteria for a variance, the variance is not contrary to public interest. That case, the Harborside case, directs you to look at whether or not the variance, if granted, would result in an alteration of the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. This would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. As you all know, it's a commercial district. There's a fair amount of signage. The signage in the area is consistent with the sign being proposed. The unique aspect, of course, is the roof sign, and the zoning ordinance does not contemplate roof signs, so that's why we're before you. As far as the aesthetics of the sign, it's a very classy sign. I don't know if you've seen a representation of it, but it's a nice, subtle, but appropriate sign for the area. There is a sign, yes. Great. There is a sign located in front of it for Weaver's Row. It would play nicely off of that sign. The designs are complementary. And so with respect to the public interest, it fits into the essential character of the neighborhood and accompanies the essential character of the neighborhood. And with respect to public safety, health, or welfare, the health and welfare don't really apply that much, but the safety aspect is important to consider. An appropriate sign, as contemplated by the sign ordinance itself, allows the public to direct itself when it's looking for a place of business, and it also allows the business to identify itself to the public as they're traveling. So this sign is appropriate from a safety perspective in that it'd allow a traveler on 108 heading north to identify the building with enough time to then turn in prior to passing the building and having to turn around. It's kind of unique in that as you travel into town on 108, you're actually coming up that hill, and as you come up that hill, you'll see the Weaver's Row sign first. It's kind of, the building's kind of obscured by the hill and the Weaver's Row sign, and then as you come up, the Weaver's Row sign kind of passes in front of your building, in front of the building as you travel past it. So that safety element is important.
Is it one sign on the front of the building?
Yes, it would be one sign on the front facing the north side of the building.
Right, the north face of the building, so somebody heading south would see it.
But there'd also be one on the side of the building.
Oh, right, heading south.
Right? You have three, you have three signs here. So there'd be one on the side of the building facing Main Street?
Yes.
And one on the roof?
Correct.
Facing north?
North.
And then you use, utilize the old sign with aroma Joes?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
There are three different businesses operating, so each business is permitted a sign. And then the street corner allowance was given for two signs per business. That the newly adopted Weaver's Row is being construed as a street. So each business is permitted to have two signs. Primarily, the issue is the sign can't be above the wall line.
The variance request is for the roof sign.
Correct.
Correct.
The other signs are permitted.
That's correct.
This one. You're just showing all the signs.
Right.
But this is the only one you're...
That's the only one there.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry. Go ahead.
That's quite all right. With respect to the second prong of the test, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Again, this prong, as you all know, somewhat overlaps the initial prong of the test. And in that prong, I mentioned that the sign section of the zoning ordinance asks the board, or asks, directs that the balance between a business's need for identification and the public's need for direction be weighed against one another. Again, in order to properly see and have an identity for the business as you travel on 108, you'll need a sign that's visible. So for business identification purposes and for safe travel, we believe that the spirit of the ordinance will be met. Also, with respect to the M2A zone, one of its purposes is to protect, enhance, and expand the commercial, social, civic, and residential functions of downtown. We believe that by allowing the proposed sign, you'll enhance another, or allow another building to prosper in the downtown neighborhood. With respect to substantial justice, the Harborside test, or case again, rather, directs that the inquiry be, any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. Here, without the sign, there's a substantial adverse effect potentially on the applicant's business and his ability to identify himself to the traveling public. So there's a significant potential loss to the individual. With respect to the general public, there's no real harm there. The general public benefits from appropriate signage and the ability to travel safely and find the destination, make a turn at the right driveway, et cetera. So we believe that substantial justice will be done if the variance is granted. With respect to the fourth prong, that looks at the property values around the lot affected by the variance and asks the question of whether or not those property values will be diminished. We believe that by developing this lot, it's a nice, clean-looking building. It's a renovation of a prior automotive facility. It's a very nice building. The sign is very attractive, and we believe that the property values of the surrounding properties will actually be increased, if anything. They certainly won't be diminished. And with respect to hardship, if you look at both of the tests under hardship, whether it's substantial, no fair and substantial relationship exists, or the special conditions test, we believe that we have satisfied both of those tests. Again, we look to the Harborside case for some guidance, and you can see that in the narrative. But the hardship test with respect to no fair and substantial relationship is, from the get-go, the zoning ordinance doesn't have roof sign sections. So there's a struggle to actually just even come up with a fair and substantial relationship from that perspective, because this is a wholly kind of new concept with respect to what the zoning ordinance contemplates. However, as I just mentioned, the building was a renovated automotive business, Riverdale Auto. Given the kind of garage bays and the configuration of that building when it was converted, it didn't leave a lot of wall space for a sign on the wall, and walls, as you know, are contemplated, wall signs, rather, are contemplated by the zoning ordinance. Second, the positioning of the building with the front of it being the long way, with it being perpendicular to 108, presents its own challenge with respect to that lot. It's unique in that regard. Again, it creates a situation where in order to get into the front of the building, you'll have to recognize the building and make a turn before it as you're coming up that hill on 108, and that's a unique circumstance, as is the geography when you're approaching it in order to be able to identify the business. Third is somewhat related to the geography, and I touched on it earlier, is as you approach the building, there's limited wall space. There's the Weaver's Row sign that, as you travel, kind of passes in front of the, your field of vision when you're looking at the front of the business. And to have an effective sign, you'd have to be above that sign. So with respect to the location of the sign on the roof, it's a pretty reasonable use of the property. And under the prong A, or the first part of the hardship test, we believe that it satisfies those elements and is an effective sign that would allow travelers to identify the business and would meet all of the prongs of the test. With respect to unnecessary hardship, the second test, we also believe that the special conditions, and I won't go through them again, I've just somewhat listed them on the first test, allow the business to meet that test and satisfy that test. And so with respect to both tests, we believe we satisfy them on unnecessary hardship. With respect to all five of the criteria, we believe we satisfy the criteria for granting a variance. And if you have any questions regarding the application, I'd be happy to answer them, but we hope that you feel the same way about our request.
The size of the sign. What is the square footage of the sign?
The sign of the size is, the size of the sign...
Ninety-seven square feet.
Is it the same size as it was prior?
Yeah, it's the same as, yep.
Ninety-seven square feet, okay.
How was, how was the size determined? I mean, is there a formula for that?
There is a formula in our zoning...
For wall signs?
For wall signs. And it says that it can't exceed 10% of that elevation, which we scaled this off and found it to be under the 10% of the wall area.
On the front.
Of that front elevation, correct.
All right.
Right. When we looked at the, at the wall sign criteria, it meets the, there's three or four elements of the wall sign. It meets those with respect to a roof. So the requirement not to exceed the height of the wall, it doesn't exceed the ridge of the roof and the 10% requirement.
Logic's good.
Any direct lighting on the sign?
No, there's no direct.
Okay.
Is there? Not like spot.
We have goosnecks that we planned to go onto the lights, I mean, onto the sign.
Okay.
Shining on.
And then shine down?
Yeah, shine down, or no bulb to be seen or anything like that.
Good. The sign, this sign will really only work for traffic that's headed southbound
Correct.
From Durham. So nothing contemplated for northbound traffic, or, there's no room for it?
No room for it.
Okay. So, all right.
You could have a blimp.
Yeah, another floodlights and...
No, aroma Joe's going to take care of that.
Okay.
But the side is taken care of, so.
It's an unusual configuration because the building is perpendicular to the road.
Yeah.
It's just the odd way it's set up. Is there any, Mr. McDonald, I ask you to sit and have public comment. Depending on what the comments are, I'll have you come back and respond if you, if you care to.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment input into the application for the sign variance request? Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we are open for discussion among ourselves.
I think the placement of the sign is a good thing. We don't have any variances for roof signs, but it is, as they just spoke about, it's less than 10% of the area. And as long as the roof is pre-approved by our building inspector prior to installation, I am comfortable with it, and it, and it won't exceed the peak. It'll have to be below the peak of the roof. We don't want it above it.
I think the applicant has suggested that, that it will be, the top of the sign will be below the ridge of the roof?
Right.
And that's sensible to me. Any further comment? Are we comfortable, Bob, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Are we comfortable adopting the application as our findings and granting the application subject to the top of the sign being below the bridge line and otherwise in compliance?
That's fine.
Final approval with our building inspector.
Subject to final approval by the building inspector?
Just like that other Weaver sign. It'd come out real nice, I thought.
Yeah. And one of the things we talked about when the Weaver sign went in is it's important to have a nice, visible sign so people don't slow down to try to figure out what's going on in the building.
And that is a nice sign.
So I guess to put it all together, what I'm proposing is a motion to adopt the application as the findings of the board and approve the application subject to the top of the sign being below the ridge of the roof and otherwise subject to the approval of the building inspector for the final placement of the sign.
I like that. I'll make that if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote is four to zero.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McDonald, satisfactory to what you need?
That is, thank you.
Then leave before we change our mind. McDonald's practiced long, long enough. He knows exactly what I mean. Thank you. The next order of business is the application of Waterway Realty, LLC. Public hearing for an application for a variance from Section 1.05(c)(1) of the New Market Zoning Ordinance to permit existing duplexes to remain on a subdivided lot, which is a non-conforming use in a non-conforming lot, and a variance from Section 2.09(b) to permit two existing duplexes, duplexes to remain in the R1 zone on a smaller lot than presently exists, thereby increasing the nonconformity of the use and the lot. The lot is located at 310 Wildly Falls Road, Tax Map R5, Lot 85 in the R1 zone, and this is the property otherwise known as the Walker Homestead. And, sir? Good evening.
Good evening.
This is your chance to present your application.
Okay. For the record, I'm Tim Lavelle, James Lavelle Associates, representing Waterway Realty, LLC, the owners of 310 Wildly Falls Road or the Walker Farm. It's a unique property. There are 20 acres there now. Kind of a narrow piece of property. Goes quite a ways back. Existing on there is the Walker Farm house itself, which is actually a duplex. How long it's been a duplex, I'm not sure. The town's certainly well aware of it. And then to the left of it, or on the other side of the driveway, there is another duplex. Part of it is an old structure, and another part of it is a somewhat new ranch home. And we propose to leave those there in that configuration. They both have access to the municipal water. They have septic systems for each. And we would propose to cut those off from the remaining backland, putting them on four acres. They're, they're close together now in regards to what your ordinances would permit if, if they were built new. So four acres encompasses them quite easily. Doesn't, leaves plenty of room for septics and yards for each. Again, this is kind of a unique property, and the ultimate goal is to do some sort of development on the back portion of this property. We've looked at a few things. We've gone in front of the planning board with some ideas. In front of the planning board was only for discussion purposes. We didn't submit anything. We're just kind of investigating what can be done. Before anything can be done, we do need to kind of straighten out the fact that there are two duplexes there. As far as the criterion, I know you have my answers in front of you. I don't know if you wanted me to expand upon them, or, I know you wanted to take a site walk, so I don't know if we wanted to just kind of leave it at this and...
Well, what I'd like you to, I think what makes sense is to, don't read it to us, but if there's particular facts in there or additional things you want to bring to our attention, do that now so we can have that in mind when we do our site walk. This is your opportunity to present basically what's going on.
I usually expand upon my answers once I get in front of you, because it's hard to, it's hard for me to write them down, but I can...
This is our, this is your opportunity.
Have a bit of a gift to gab, I can keep going.
Can you, can you tell me what the total acreage of the lot is?
The total acreage of the lot is 19.96 acres.
Okay.
Presently, and we're...
In the, in broad strokes, you're trying to create a four-acre lot and then a 15 or close to 16-acre lot?
Close to 16, yeah. It would be 15.96.
Okay. And then you're talking to the planning board in conceptual terms about what you might do with the 16, call it the 16-acre lot?
Yes. That's a...
Do you, do you have in mind to move or the existing septic systems?
No.
No, okay.
The, now, there's a plan in front of you, obviously preliminarily, because the planning board hasn't looked at it or anything, but, which encompasses everything, and the septic systems and everything would be within there and meet all the setbacks to any new proposed lot lines, et cetera.
Would there be a new curb cut on this, for the 16-acre lot?
Yes. If you look to the, oh, as you look at the plan above the second house or opposite where it says Falls on Wildly Falls Road?
Mm-hmm.
The lot line is shown there with, with an arc kind of turning to the south or back towards town. That's essentially the south side of a proposed road, and that's why that arc is there, so that the flared end of a road would fit in there, your, your normal configuration of a 50-foot road with...
I see what you're saying.
The 25-foot arcs.
Right where that little pond is.
It's, we would be able to put the road without affecting the pond, but yes, right, right next to that, that wet area there. In fact, that's what that dark line on the plan is, is the wetlands. We had the wetlands mapped on the property as well.
Can you do me a favor and take my copy of the plan in this highlighter and just show me roughly where you think the road's going to go? And I realize this is rough, but this is just your conceptual idea. Okay.
Again, of course, the actual pavement would be...
Okay. That's helpful. Is there going to be wetland permitting required?
We don't believe we would have to affect the wetlands at all. We can go along beside it. Now, I drew the line through the wetland there, but that would be the right-of-way at 50 feet wide, but your pavement's within that, and most likely it can fit between the two. That's why we chose to put the line there, as well as the proximity to the existing dwelling.
And is there anything for the Conservation Commission? Do we need to go to the Conservation Commission, Diane?
I believe if we were to go in front of the planning board, we would need, I mean, they would look at it.
The planning board, the Conservation Commission would weigh in, and there may be a need for a future stage of the development to get wetlands permits for impacts of the proposed roadway.
From what we saw, it was a pretty good shot that we could avoid all impacts, actually.
The, the wetlands that are identified here, did you have a wetland scientist do that?
Yes.
Who was that?
Timothy Verwerta from Meridian Land Services.
Okay. And then he flagged it, and then the surveyor came out and...
Correct.
Sorry, I interrupted you with a bunch of questions.
That's okay. That's what we're here for. Again, I'll quickly touch on the criterion. We don't feel that it's contrary to the public interest. It's really kind of a continued use. The two duplexes are there. They're off to the corner of this property. They're not utilizing a large portion of it. So we don't, we don't feel that, you know, it would injure the public in any way because it's going on now. The spirit and intent of the ordinance, that's a, that's a little tougher. The spirit of the intent is to, we feel is to make sure things aren't too densely packed. These, however, these, these are there as close to each other as, as they're going to be. We're not increasing that. We don't feel we would be changing the, you know, or going against the spirit of the ordinance. We feel it would do substantial justice because it would allow for the continued use that had been enjoyed by the Walker Farm in the same manner. And as, okay. Now, as far as property values being diminished, it's there. Property, property values should remain the same. Unlike the previous application, we don't feel we could increase their values. We're essentially just allowing what's there to, to continue doing so on a smaller lot and utilizing the back of the property for something else. Only the special conditions of the products, property, the special conditions of this property are the property itself, the fact that everything has already been kind of clustered up to the, the southeast corner, southwest corner, excuse me. And no fair and substantial relationship exists. We feel that they exist. There's plenty of room for what's been there. And to, you know, have to put eight acres and kind of utilize the best portion of this property to continue their uses would actually be, you know, would be unreasonable. So... uses would actually be, you know, would be unreasonable, so, that's, that's it, as, as we've written and I've expanded upon them, it is definitely a unique property. I think it's, I don't think it's super unique, you know, the farms in the old days would have multiple families living there, and in this case, they just split the house up rather than have everyone living on the same side, I guess.
How many lots do you propose? About? I know you haven't gotten that point yet.
I think it was eight.
Eight? And you're going in about, what, 500 feet to that high ground out there?
It was, actually, I thought it was more like 700 feet.
700, real, oh, well...
Was it five?
Okay.
I'm thinking of going around the cul-de-sac, it's 500.
500.
Okay, yeah, yeah. All right.
So, to make it, you said something I'm not sure I followed, to make it conforming, you would need an eight-acre lot?
Well, if you read the zoning, it, it says that you need two acres per unit, so that would be four acres per duplex, eight acres for two duplexes. The fact that there are two duplexes on the property is, is one issue, and then the other issue would be to make them conform, you would need eight. So, to put eight acres with them, most of it would be unused by the duplexes, it would just be out in the back.
And that is, that is to make the existing conditions conforming, the existing structures conforming.
Correct. It would, that would only make them partly conforming because two units on one lot...
That's a pre-existing, that's...
Isn't conforming, so...
Yeah.
So, this is a tricky one. We looked at trying to get a lot line between the barn and the other duplex, and that would create setback issues and access issues. So, this, this...
The barn is not one that's falling down, it's in okay shape, I mean, we don't want to get rid of it. Actually, the, all of the structures on the property are in structurally fairly good shape.
Any further questions for the applicant right at the minute? We're gonna have more opportunities later. Everybody, hi, Jonathan Quox.
Sorry for being late.
The main house, is that a duplex or a two-tenant? Is that owned by two different people?
It's owned by one, it's all owned by one person.
Okay.
But it is a two-family home and...
Family home?
Yeah.
Okay, so they rent out half, or maybe they rent out...
I think they rent out both, are the tenants in both, huh?
Okay, but, but it's not a duplex, it's a...
It's duplex style, it's half this way as opposed to flat.
Not, not a complex, no, just a two-family.
Yeah, so it's only, solely owned by one person.
Correct.
So, there's, there's, there's one deed.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think that's what he's saying, yeah. Okay, you can take a seat, I'm gonna find out if there's any, any public comment. Mrs. Quox, good evening.
Excuse my care, just got on with the guy, and I put the TV on.
To let you know, we're, we're thinking of doing a site walk, so we're gonna do a site walk, then we're gonna come back and have more comment, just so you know.
Okay. Roseanne Quox, 332 Wildly Falls. I know the, the original, the old building there, the Walker Homestead, is a two-family and has been a two-family, but I had occasion to speak to the prior code enforcement officer when Dave Walker was built in his addition onto it, the lean-to basically where, for Mr. Walker, Old Man Walker is, I think, what he was called in town, no disrespect meant. And that was built as an addition, that was not built as a duplex, because I had asked the code enforcement officer about that, and I had occasion to speak to Dave Walker after his dad had passed, and he explained to me that it was put on as an addition, and I think the plans, if you still have a copy of the plans in the planning office, that would show that, because if he was gonna put a duplex there, that probably are considered an accessory apartment. He probably would have had it come before the ZBA to get that approved, and I don't believe he did. But that is just because there happens to be two kitchens. The understanding was when Dave Walker put the newer home there, it was an addition, and that's all it was, it is not, it was not built as a legal duplex, so it wasn't a duplex that...
I think you're right, because I've been in that house many times, and there's an actual passageway between the old state shed and the, and the ranch house, so, I mean, it's not just the door, it's a...
It's open, and that's why Dave was allowed to build it as such, was because it was not distinguished as a duplex, it was actually a single-family, it was an addition, is what it was considered, so it's not too...
But I don't know whether that makes much difference.
I don't think it makes much difference.
No.
Carry on.
It is what it is.
Yeah, let's let, let's let Roseanne finish her comments, go ahead.
But, you know, saying it is what it is, he has no prior approval for a duplex. That's correct.
Right, go ahead.
There's nothing in the record that says he has approval for two duplexes on that lot, you're correct. Right. So, I mean, you know, I have concerns, and especially if he's planning, because he did come in for a conceptual before the planning board, for a supposed division in the back, and, you know, I don't know with the configuration, I haven't seen any plans as to the parking and pulling in and out, but just to let the board know that it was not built as a duplex on the left side, it was a single-family addition, is what it was, so it's not that there's a legal duplex there, and he wants to divide it and make two separate lots. It was never duplex, it was only a single-family.
When was that done? Do you remember?
Oh, jeez.
Ten, ten years ago.
It wasn't that long?
I don't even know if it was 10.
Not even 10.
Yeah, might be eight, eight years ago.
2006.
Yeah, yeah.
2006, okay.
2006.
Anything else?
What, what year?
06.
2006.
Original was 1977.
Okay.
Okay.
Nine years.
So, there'll be a site walk and whatnot?
We're gonna try to schedule a site walk for Saturday if we can.
Okay.
Which will be open to the public. Okay, I've already given away the punchline, which is, what I'd like to do is, because this, to me, there's a lot of moving parts here, is schedule a site walk, hopefully for Saturday morning, if that works.
Works for me, I don't have anything scheduled.
9:00, 9:30?
Yeah, but Charlie, I can make it because I got something planned later.
How about 9 o'clock?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Earlier, but I got no problem with...
8:30, Jonathan's?
8:30 works.
Let's call it 8:30 then.
8:30, that's fine.
And then can we come back a week from tonight?
Yep.
Sure. We gotta continue it to a date certain.
So, what I'd like to do is continue, entertain a motion to continue the hearing to Saturday at 8:30 for a site walk, and then followed by a meeting a week from tonight here at 7 o'clock.
I make a motion that we have a site walk on the 16th at 8:30 and continue the meeting to the 18th at 7 o'clock.
And if you can get the notices out?
We don't need to do, we continue, we don't need to do a notice.
And then we'll do the site walk, give the applicant an opportunity to make any additional, respond to any additional questions, make any additional presentation. Additional public comment will remain open. Public is invited to the site walk. I strongly prefer to have limited discussion of the merits of the application on the site walk, you guys all know that, and you all make fun of me for it, but that's the way I feel about it. And then we have all of our public comment in here. Do I have a second for Bob's motion?
I second it.
For the discussion?
Wayne seconded it.
Oh, for this, enough for the discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. The ayes have it. So, we'll see you on Saturday at 8:30.
Thank you very much.
And then, any new or old business to come before the board at this time?
Do, do we want to put something in the record about the discussion with the studies or on the deals?
No. One thing I do want to clarify is, Rich has served as an appointed adjutant for purposes of both applications tonight, I should have mentioned that earlier, but there is no objection to his participation, so. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. We're adjourned.